Present at the site as well as commissary of danger is virtual. In a few minutes, he will be virtual.
That's okay. Move to the end, Brian.
Yes. Please note that we do have a quorum as well. If you would all please rise and David, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is the approval of the executive session memorandum. Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of the meeting minutes from February 12, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We've got a bid opening. Attorney Sullivan, please.
One second, it's quite feeling.
Are we going to take those in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. As long as there is there.
Do you want to read on the record who they're from?
Yes, I can.
We don't have any way to get them on the record if.
You don't? Okay. Okay, so go ahead and read on the record.
Yeah, one second. So this one's the first call projects or the first project bid opening is for the Health County Special Projects 2024. Bid packages zero four dash zero nine subcontractor bid opening. First one is from Dan Haynes Construction Incorporated.
Dan Haynes?
Yes.
This is the first bid out here. Or the second, yeah. There should be two sheets, but there's not.
So the total amount for this bid is $499,022.
Oh, okay.
Second one is from Mills Bond Stock Incorporated. This bid is for Sorry. The next one is from Performance Mechanical Contracting, Inc. The total bid is $118,951.
Are we getting hard here?
Wow.
What's that? It's various projects for Health County Special Projects 2024. Is that it?
Yeah. There's the big package numbers on the front.
Oh.
They're written on the front. They didn't get sorted? Steve, do you want to come up here or Brian?
This is five.
Five? So this one's for Gimco.
None of these people sound like rude people.
Yes, yeah.
I think we're getting the stack together because they don't sound like rude people.
Yeah. This one, this one was zero. Yeah, Jim Co for was it bid packet zero five, is that right?
Bid packet zero five.
Bid packet zero five.
Sorry, this is bit packet zero.
Five.
This is zero eight.
Oh, zero eight. Oh, sorry. It says zero five down here. Oh, this is zero five too.
This is zero eight.
Zero eight. All right.
This is zero eight, the packet?
Yes.
Jim Co?
Yes, and it's for $325,100. Gimco zero five or the zero five bid package. The bid for this is $106,183.
Was the only bid on quarter of the one?
Those are all O six.
O six. This is Morgan Stripping Services, Inc., and this is for bid package zero six. Stripping, oh, sorry, Morgan Stripping. Wait, wait, that's their tool. Looks like I've got to do a math on this one, Paul, just. For a total of $154,798. Morgan Stripping. This one is EMV paving.
That's probably on.
No, it's, it is.
It's still.
That's the shortest one?
It's still.
This is so confusing.
Yes, it is. Bid package zero six. For $155,645. This one is Sykes Asphalt and Concrete for bid package zero six paving. Total price is $146,77.12.
Oh, now I get the numbers.
This is bid packet zero seven from Kevin Jarvis, Richie finishes, Richie finishes for $385,800. This one's from Connor Fine Painting. Is this, this one's for zero eight two, I believe?
Seven.
Zero seven, sorry, zero seven. And this total is $378,980. Cerillo Plumbing for bid package number eight. The total is
Because that was eight two, right?
This is bid is from Pella, McComb Pella, bid package nine, and the total is $197,350. Cleverness for bid package zero nine. $227,902.
What's that for, fifteen, two cents?
Fifteen cents.
I'm not sure. This one might be for this. Because it is not clearly labeled the one or the other. It might be for packet six.
Package six, okay. HSC pavement maintenance. This is for
Maybe six.
Yes. Yeah, this is for bid packet six. Six is for $250,521.70.
Is that all the ones for?
That's all the ones for that.
That is all the ones for the 2024 special projects.
Oh, thank heavens.
Yes.
I got all that.
What I would suggest in my motion will be for the gentleman from Skindrick.
Brian?
And Andrew to go back in the back.
And Steve Wood.
And Steve Wood to go to the back and sort through and properly fill this out. Good luck. And come back with recommendations if you were able to do so at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes, it was.
All second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Now for contract twenty four dash one, various road projects in Jackson and Washington Townships. The first bid is from Cali Mets. The total is $1,265,500. They do have a bid bond. Four ninety six is here. Yes, that appears to be the full amount there, the full bid there. Turned in? Okay, Jim will look through those ones. The second bid is from DC Construction Services. They have their four ninety six. They have acknowledged receipt of the addendums. Bid bond is here. Yeah, so the total for this was $997,564.70. Five, six, four. Financial statement is here. The next bid is from EMV Paving LLC. Four ninety six is here. Financial statement is here. Bid bond is present. The total for this one is $1,121,547.83. They did have the notice of addendum as well and their e-verify statement as well in there. The next one's from Power Companies. The four ninety six is present. The total is $1,225,888.85. Bid bond's present. E-verification is here and the notice of receipt of addendum is present. The next one is from Midwest Paving. The total on this bid is $974,768.68. Their four ninety six is present. The noncollusion affidavit is here. Bid bond is present. Financial statement is present. And it says there addendum. E-verification is present. The notice of receipt of addendum is present. It appears good to go. I think it's the final one, right?
Yeah.
All right, finally. Last one is from Reeve Riley. Itemized proposal, the total amount is $1,361,360. Four ninety six is present. The financial statements for the firm is present. Noncollusion affidavit is present. Bid bond is present. E-verify statement is here. They have their stipend insurance attached as well. That's good, that's there. Authority to sign. And then notice of receipt of addendums is present as well. Is there any other bids that anyone might be aware of that we are missing currently? I believe commissioners, the highways request that they make the determination today based on this, and so they will, if you have to take us back, Jim?
Take an inner advisement and then report at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion? Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Highway business.
I have a live agenda for you today. I have no road cut, private traffic control, or vehicle exemption permits, no bonds for acceptance or release, no grants or supplements, no streets for acceptance. I do have a request for road closure. This is for small structure two three zero two three, 196th Street over unknown stream. Because of some, some other issues with utility relocation, the contractor has, we've already left this and they've requested to be able to start this earlier than they originally had anticipated. We have contacted Hamilton Southeastern School Corporation to arrange for their bus detours and install a temporary turnaround for the bus. This is a up to 60 day closure. The contractor is confident it will not take that long, starting in honor after March 4th. Would recommend the board approve.
So move.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Have no traffic study correspondence, public works, quotation results, or official actions. Next item is the plat signature owner's certificate. This goes back to the swap that the county did with a developer for the drain adjustment that we had bought Fee Simple as part of 146th Street. And so now as they're plating, you're listed as a property owner, so you have to sign the plat.
But we're included in their plat?
Yes.
See, and that's, that's my confusion. I didn't understand when we swapped, we would be part of the private plat.
And the person that would understand that was not here today.
It's, it's all due to the fact that it's labeled as a commons area so that they have maintenance responsibilities. It's a regulated drainage much, but it's also a commons area so that they maintain that pond, the side slopes, the mowing, the aquatic vegetation, et cetera, et cetera. And that was all done so that it was all tied to the covenants and restrictions and the plat.
Well, I understand the maintenance part because I assume we were part of their system, but I didn't know it would be a platted area within the plat. That makes me uncomfortable, quite honestly, and I'd like to table it until we dig into it.
That's perfectly fine.
And find perhaps an alternate course because that puts us in a situation of potential liability on private property, on others' private property.
Okay, second, there's been a motion to table. A second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And thanks for digging out all that information because I couldn't figure what's going on.
Thank you.
I have no correspondence or other announcements, which only leaves stuff that Brad has.
What kind of stuff do you have?
Not really. Just that we have reviewed the annual bids that we opened in the last meeting and now have the recommendations for you, for your approval. You can have that if you want to follow along. Mark, I got a copy here if you want to follow, if you want to just follow along. Thank you. So we've reviewed these bids that we received and have these awards to make for category one, which is our aggregate. Recommend awarding to Irving Materials for both the gravel and the stone. They were actually the only bidder as well. They've been our supplier for many years. For category two, bituminous mixes, making a recommendation to award to EMV Paving. They again have been our vendor for quite some time. For category three, liquid asphalt, recommend that we accept the prices for plant picked up from both Marathon Ashland and asphalt materials. And for job site delivery, the recommendation is to go with Marathon Ashland. For pipes and drainage structures, for corrugated metal pipe and pipe arches, recommendation is to go with Metal Culverts, Inc. For timber bridge components, again, it would be the recommendation to American Timber Bridge and Culvert. And for gasoline and fuel, recommendation is to go with Cirrus Solutions across the street from us. For pavement markings, for painted markings and thermoplastic traffic markings, the recommendation is to go with CE Hughes Milling, which is DVA for air marking company. And for our no passing zone road survey category, recommendation is to go with Accurate Striping. Onto category nine, which is weed and brush control for spring and fall, fertilization and weed control. Recommendation is to go with Veridis LLC. And for tree and stump removal, the recommendation is to go with Sabatree. And for traffic signal maintenance, the recommendation is to go with Signal Construction, who has done that for, done this service for us in the past. And for mowing, the recommendation is to go with Right Away Turf Ornamental, Inc. Those are the recommendations from the review of the bids and would ask for your approval.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And here's the fun part, the acceptance forms for you to sign.
Was it all president? No?
No. Oh, you started to laugh a little there, didn't you?
Didn't work out.
Or we know.
The last thing I had is Friday, March 1st, we have a scheduled meeting.
And you.
We'd like to continue that.
Yep.
It happens to be the same morning that Noblesville does their, or the Pleasant Street update at Noblesville. So I don't know if you want to go there for that and then come back to the highway or if we just want to try to zoom in from the highway.
Let's zoom in from the highway.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good to me. Okay, clerk of city courts, Kathy Williams. Good afternoon.
Approve it. Happens. Stick together. Thank you.
This is the precinct changes for the 24th primary. We have 108 locations and we had 19 changes. And so we will send notice all to those individuals where they vote for their.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry. There's 108 locations and there were 19 changes from last time, and we will send notice to all those voters that are changing.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Booker.
Thank you for putting the puzzle together.
Emergency Management Agency.
Good afternoon, I bring for you 2023 emergency management performance grant for salary reimbursement in the amount of $89,827.62.
How much has that changed over the years?
It's gone down considerably. We originally used to receive up to $150,000.
Right.
And then that was changed under the previous executive director of IDHS in hopes of adding more full-time emergency managers. And when I acquired about what benefited that was, I was told I could make a Freedom of Information request to get that. And so we really don't know what the fruits of that labor, fruits of that effort was to take that money away, not away from us, but several other counties. But at the same time, there are other states that take all of the ENPG money and they don't give any of it for salaries. So we, even though we've lost some money over time, we're still better off than many other states.
So what we presume happens is that they've added more people to the pool and so the pool got bigger and our share got smaller.
I suspect that there's, there are many state positions that are ENPG funded and I suspect that they leverage that, those funds for more state employees and that that was the reason that we received fewer dollars.
So we're dependent on whatever the state wants, even though it's federal dollars?
Yes.
That's what it sounds like.
Okay. Move to accept.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Add or, I'm sorry, Lee does have one other item for me that is on his portion, which is use of county vehicle for training purposes to, for one of our employees who's taking required classes up in Fort Worth.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jason LaMester, Hamilton County Health Department. Health First Hamilton County Grant Agreement through the Shepherd Center of Hamilton County. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I believe this is along the lines of the grant agreements that we have done for 2024 using some of the state funds that have come in through the Health First Indiana initiatives. We work, have been working with the Shepherd Center to develop another project and they are, and their senior service is called Reaching Resources. And it meets our criteria for access to care in a trauma and injury prevention public health core service. So we would like to help them out and provide them funding for this.
Okay, one question I had under seven, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. It's on the last page of 11 of 11. Items not related to, and they cite a code section, and it made pursuant to changes in 2023. Was that just the enlargement of the health department, do you think? I just would point that out to Shepherd Center to make sure they review that in case something did ship from them.
Yes, I think that's kind of, that was where that was brought from. And actually some of a little bit on our agreements as well, where our dates are off. And actually, some of a little bit on our agreements as well, where our dates are off, where we'd started in 2023 and moved into the 2024 year as well. So I need to make sure that we move that with up.
Yeah, it's probably fine, but I just, always makes me nervous whenever it's used to boilerplate and then it changes.
Is there a motion?
So we... I thought it did, okay.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. ISSD, Chris Mertens. I know he's not here today, so we've got Heather and Joan to present. Two items. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Today I have the Ezra renewal quote at $63,400.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries. Next item.
Good afternoon. Mine's pretty easy, a zero dollar change order, just extending the length of service for our implementation team for UKG.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries. Thank you. Joe Acklin, Court Administration, Amendment to Hamilton County Circuit in Superior Court, Number One, proper attorney contract.
Yes, the judge has hired attorney Christopher Evans to be the new magistrate to replace the vacancy that was left when Judge Block moved to Circuit Court. So this contract just shows that Stacy Yambler is going to be taking over the contract that Chris Evans used to have.
Move to approve.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioner or Committee reports, Christine?
Not much. I've just been working on land acquisition.
Yeah, okay. I have nothing to report. Attorney?
I have a few items. The first is a professional service agreement for the scoping period for the Judicial Center project. This is between Hamilton County and Envoy as the bot developer. The scoping period covers about 18 weeks total. The total scoping fee is $2,4,900. The services that are included are architectural and engineering design to a schematic design for several options that the county is considering. At the end of this, they will come back and provide their recommendation for what is the best route for the county to move forward on with our Judicial Center expansion. John Barbie from Envoy is here for any questions, comments, or concerns. This agreement has been worked on between John, one of his employees, Dale Davis, and Steve Wood and I for probably about two weeks or so.
And myself.
Yeah, and Christopher Harebrand as well, and Councilman Beaver Nation. And so it's been fully vetted, but if there's any questions or concerns, John's here or I can answer any other questions.
But what are we studying and scoping? Just all possible locations?
All possible locations.
Yes, all possible locations.
And there's a master plan included that will show county property in the downtown area and some possibilities for...
Just like what was asked.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're looking at all.
Yes, ma'am. It is all.
Thank you. So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
I have a couple more things. One, Lee and I have talked about it, and I think it makes more sense to go under mine, but the sheriff's office is in the final process of purchasing. And Captain, what is the right term for it? What is it?
An armored response vehicle.
An armored response vehicle. It is a unique item, as you can imagine. And it's an item that's, it's the, there's not many companies of A that make this type. In fact, I think it's the only company that makes this, correct, Captain?
Yes, sir.
And so I have a few questions. I wanted to just put on the record from the captain, just to clarify that the procurement method was in compliance with the...
Can I ask a specific question? When you went through budgeting to acquire funds for this, this was vetted with county council?
Yes, it was.
Well, no, I want that coming on the record from the sheriff.
That's what I understand.
Because I know in the past, there's been resistance from county council on such a vehicle.
And I don't want to speak on his behalf, but my understanding of Lee correctly too is that the sheriff, the sheriff's office is going to purchase less vehicles per enterprise fleet management system, and that will make up the difference. Is that understanding correct, Lee?
No, but was it a specific request when you went through budgeting process? I'm just, given the history I have with council on these type of vehicles, I'm asking the question before we approve the purchase process.
From my understanding, the sheriff has been in discussion with the council for some time about how they would budget this. There was a gap in what was originally, the cost was going to be in. So they, because there's such a long lead time on a vehicle like this, it's a year and a half, that they, to make up that gap, what he was going to do, instead of updating his police vehicles, he was going to use some funds from three or four vehicles that he had allocated for next year towards this, so that he could get the order in and get this thing moving because of the long lead time. That's what was communicated from Sheriff Quaken Bush to me in my conversation that I had.
I just recall, certain members of council were adamantly opposed when we had the opportunity to get some with homeland security.
And it's my understanding too, that the council was in favor of this, as he, that's what he stated to me.
I'll move to approve, subject to council approval.
Bobby, just to make sure I tell, say how the procurement's applying to, just because it is...
No, that's fine, yeah.
Before we get into it, and this is per CFR Title II Part 200. The Linco, which is the manufacturer of this vehicle, is considered a...
Sole source.
Sole source, which would then satisfy Indiana Code 522-1015 for how we procure this vehicle. I just want, it's unique, so I just want to put on the record to show that we're, make sure we're all compliant.
And I asked Connor to do that when I got that request.
There's not too many people that do these.
This one, exactly, it's only one person, actually.
I will second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
The next two items I have, per conversations, the Hamilton County Legal Department hired a second paralegal. And her, she had 20-plus years of experience with Mike Howard, who was the previous county attorney. And due to her experience and qualifications, I am requesting that the board approve her to come in above the standard PTO time, based upon her experience of serving with Mike Howard, who essentially was the Hamilton County Legal Department. That would be 10 days of PTO, and that your motion would permit the auditor and I to get that, the paperwork taken care of. In the meantime, to make this sure it starts the next paper.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
The last item I have...
You had something for Taft, because you accidentally handed it to me.
Oh, I did? Okay, yeah. That's, I was just, you know, saving time. Tap invoice for $903 for EEOC charge. I have that for your approval today.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. One last thing. For the bid packages received earlier, Steve Wood and his team took those back and reviewed them and have a list. I'll provide the auditor for public record, but they would request a motion to permit them to review those and go dig into them and provide you a recommendation at your next meeting on March 11th.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries. Anything else?
No, that's all, sorry.
Sure.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You sure?
If I have, I forgot.
Okay. David, you? No. Okay. Lee, Director of Administration.
Thank you. First off, either my apologies or congratulations, but I think we think due to internet issues, internet issues, we were not able to get Commissioner Dillinger.
Oh.
This made our life easier.
It made it a lot easier than having to do roll calls and all that kind of stuff, so...
Can't take the credit or the blame. So I have several items for you this afternoon, including a couple items that were added the last couple of days. First off, presenting for your review and approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrand. I have a water infrastructure grant program dispersment form related to the February 12th, 2024 invoice from Wessler Engineering, that being invoice number 43558B, in the amount of $20,678.50. That's for engineering, excuse me, for design land acquisition, construction administration, and construction management services related to the Phase 2A and 2B of the US 31 Bakers Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District project. Ask for your approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrand with respect to that.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Item number two, presenting for your review, approval, and the formal appointment. As you're aware, the six counties of Hamilton, Hendricks, Johnson, Shelby, Boone, and Hancock collectively have an appointment to the Marion County Capital Improvement Board under Indiana Code 361094. Hamilton County is charged with organizing that appointment due to the fact that Hamilton County is the largest of that group. Jamie Bowlersmith has just completed her first term as the representative and is awaiting appointment for a second term. I have sought and received input from the majority of the other counties. All responses that I received were in support of Jamie Bowlersmith being appointed. Therefore, at this time, I would ask for a vote on the formal reappointment of Jamie Bowlersmith as the representative for Hamilton, Hendricks, Johnson, Shelby, Boone, and Hancock Counties to the Capital Improvement Board of Managers of Marion County.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
I will send notification to the Marion County Capital Improvement Board advising them of such appointment. Item three, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, a request from the Blood Mobile for blood drives to occur in front of the Government Judicial Center moving forward on May 8th of 2024, August 7th of 2024, and November 6th of 2024.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Next item presenting for your review, discussion, and approval, I have received a request from Lori Shoney on behalf of St. Michael's Episcopal Church. She's seeking approval to conduct the annual strawberry festival on the northwest corner of the Courthouse Square. This event would be held in conjunction with the Noblesville Main Street Hatch Fest.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Next item's already been dealt with. That was the EMS request. Following that, I have a request that you sign off on the official asset disposal forms for the household hazardous waste building, which has been turned over to the city of Noblesville upon their acquisition, that being for their Pleasant Street project. And I have three copies of those disposal forms for you each to sign. This is merely so we can comply with the proper form utilization for the asset disposal for the county.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
And the last thing I have on my agenda is, we just received information, I believe it was yesterday, that the work session that was scheduled for this afternoon, which was an update on broadband, apparently they have some, a meeting or some additional information...
We have, KSM has a new person taking point on it, and David Boyer, our new assistant attorney, will be the person internally taking point. And so in order them to catch up and get some more meetings together, they will, we are requesting we postpone that.
We're going to push that back to the March 11th.
For, and so we will have no work session today?
That was the only thing scheduled, I believe.
Oh, that is a shame.
Yeah, I've got, going over the numbers on another project.
So I didn't figure you'd be too disappointed, but...
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, anything?
We have nothing to report today, sir.
Thank you. Madam Monitor.
Do you feel like a madam monitor?
Yeah. I sent you, Chris, an email on the opioid. It has numbers and some information, so I just sent that to you. I do want to report and let you know that Hamilton County received the GFOA Excellence and Achievement Award for '22. I found that out yesterday, so I wanted to share that with you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And so now, first off, I have the Treasures Monthly Report for your approval.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Next, I have acceptance of letters of credit and bonds for your approval.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
Next, I have Health Trust Monthly Expenditure Reports for your approval.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
And lastly, I have vendor claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
And tell Jamie thank you, because I keep asking weird questions and she's very quick.
All right, I'll let her know. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the board?
Apparently so.
At this time, we have reviewed the bids from the opening for Contract 2401, resurface of various roads in Jackson, Washington Townships. We are recommending award to Midwest Paving LLC in the amount of $974,768.68. And we have checked the quantities and all the math works out. They would be parent later and are still later after review, recommend award.
Good. So moved.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries.
And thank you for those bids. We appreciate this.